Councilmember Ron Washington has our prayer and pledge this evening. Mr. Washington?
Yes, please bow before a moment of silence, please. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, January 14th, 2010. The first council meeting of the new year, and I certainly want to welcome everyone who is here. We also would like to certainly extend our sympathy to the people of Haiti, and I think it's surprising that council member may know individuals, but it's been surprising to me how many people in our community have someone close, or someone they count on, or someone they care for, who actually is in Haiti or thereabouts during this disaster. So I think, number one, that certainly speaks to our volunteer efforts and the way we go out to reach out as Americans to work in other countries, but at the same time about that volunteer spirit that we have. And certainly, we wish them safety, and our prayers are with them during this terrible natural disaster and tragedy in that country. I also would like to recognize tonight, and Vice Mayor, if you'll take the chair, I'm going to go down and I want to introduce some new police sergeants that we have with our Murfreesboro Police Department, if you'll take the chair. That's great. To our viewers and to our business owners and our residents and taxpayers in the city of Murfreesboro, we certainly know that public safety is an important part of the service that we deliver across our community. And tonight, we want to honor and recognize our latest promotions to sergeant in our Murfreesboro Police Department. I'm going to call out their names, and if they would, just kind of step forward when your name is called. Brian Anderson, Drew Darnell, Chad Hirschman, don't go away, come right back here. Go away. Justin Lamansky, Mike Luzadder, Scott Newberg, and Jacobio Gwynn. We are very pleased tonight to recognize these new sergeants. They've just been promoted. They have been promoted not only based on what they have done, but what we know they will do with the resources and with the people who work in our police department, and we certainly are proud of each and every one of you. We want you to be recognized and know we were behind you all the way. We will do what you say. We will be good to you if you will be good to us, and I know you will. Thank you so very much for being with us. Let me mention, too, there are family members are here and have been with us tonight, so I want to recognize that they are here in part of this ceremony, and we could not be prouder of you, and we look forward to working with you every day. Thank you very much for what you're going to be doing. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Also, we have with us tonight a scout and his father, Jared Dix, and an attorney in our sweet town, Steve Dix, is here, and we certainly appreciate them being here. And I don't know whether this is a required event for you, I think it might be a scouting occasion that you've got a checkmark that needs to be placed. So we welcome you, as we always welcome individuals and anyone to come to our council meetings, and we appreciate you being here, and thank you for modeling the latest in scout wear. So we're really proud of you and glad you're here. Thanks, Jared. All right, council members, one other thing before we get to our agenda. I don't know whether any of you have seen this or not, but this is the latest in census forms. And this is what we're going to be asked to by the federal government to fill out this year for our every 10-year decennial census. And frankly, they tell me it's easier than the last time. Well, I don't remember the last time being particularly difficult, so I'm very pleased. And I would like to point out, as I've tried several times, to our residents, this is a patriotic duty, actually, to fill out the census. And the other thing about it is, it really means a lot to taxpayers and our business owners and our residents, because very much of the emphasis that we get from the federal government in funding or in getting into some type of category really comes based on our population. And state shared revenues from Nashville, based on what our sales tax collections are and how many persons we have, is all based on the decennial census. So I'd like to encourage all of our residents, if you will, to, when you get this form, if you don't want somebody to come to your door, the best thing to do is to fill the form out and send it back. It kind of reminds me sometimes, at church, they tell you, if you don't tell us how much you're going to give, at church, we'll send somebody out to ask you. Well, that's the way it's going to be with the census, and I know all of us got plenty of other things to do, so if you'll start right here on Census 2010, it'll mean a lot to us as residents, as business owners in our community, and certainly across the county and anywhere else you have that ability. So I hope you will pay attention to that. It's not used for anything other than counting heads, and that's what's very important to all of us. So thank you very much for being here. Then also, do we have some Leadership Rutherford folks here, too? Some other people have some checkmarks to fill in. Well, very good. We're very happy to have Leadership Rutherford here. We thank you all for your efforts, and I think most people know what a great program that is through our Chamber of Commerce. Many people have completed it, and there are many others who need to apply and kind of learn what's going on in Rutherford County. Leadership Rutherford is a great opportunity to do that, and if you're interested in it, you can get some more information by calling our Chamber of Commerce at 893-6565. But we appreciate you all being here tonight, too. Thank you. If we need to sign some cards or anything else, we know you're here, and they have to be here the whole meeting. That's exactly right. That's right. And so does our council, too. You make our council stay. You don't let any of those go away, either. All right, thanks. So let's get started. Council members, you have your consent agenda before you. If you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, are there any questions? If not, are you ready for a motion?
May I move we approve the consent agenda?
Second. All right, motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to annex an area located north of Wilkinson Pike and west of West Park Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Greenland Drive and Old Las Cassis Road.
Move for passage.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending the chapter 15 gas, sections 15, 10, 12, 19, 24, and 25, dealing with a board of gas examiners, licensure of contractors, and pressure test certifications.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending chapter 33 Waters and Sewers, section 33-207, dealing with the U.S. 41 Florence Road Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to amend chapter 34 of the zoning ordinance, floodplain zoning.
Move for passage.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage, again on second reading, an ordinance to amend 6.96 acres of the Aurora Place portion of Sunset Ridge PRD located along Joby Jackson Parkway.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage, again on second reading, an ordinance to amend 6.96 acres of the Aurora Place portion of Sunset Ridge PRD located along Joby Jackson Parkway.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading, again, to rezone an area located along Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road to a commercial fringe CF district.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to rezone an area located south of Highway 99 and west of St. Andrews Drive to a commercial fringe CF district.
Move for this passage.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance amending Murfreesboro City Code, chapter 29 subdivisions, Platts and MAPS, section 29-5, dealing with fees for site plans and preliminary subdivision Platts.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, chapter 4 alcoholic beverages, section 4-46, dealing with beer permits.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll conduct a public hearing and consider a certificate of compliance for Behart Ben Patel at University Packaged Wine and Liquor Warehouse located at 2834 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against this certificate of compliance? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and I'll accept a motion that we accept this certificate of compliance.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings to consider, A, zoning ordinance amendments to section 2924, chart 1 and 4, regarding post-mortem establishments; B, zoning request to rezone approximately .52 acres located along Medical Center Parkway from a PCD to CF; and C, a zoning request to rezone 1.29 acres located along Las Cassis Pike at Winlon Drive from RM 16 to commercial local CL. Mr. Adelot?
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. During its regular meeting on January 6th of 2010, the Plan Commission conducted public hearings on those items that you just read and have recommended their approval. We need to schedule public hearings.
Ms. McGannon?
I would suggest February 11th.
Council members, you hear February 11th? All right, you have a motion and a second for February 11th. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations for February 11th. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Adelot. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Community Development Director with regards to reallocation of funds from the Housing Rehabilitation Fund to Affordable Housing Fund. You have a copy attached. Mr. Calo, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to second what you said about the 2010 census, because our Community Development Block Grant is entirely dependent upon the results of the census, and that will help establish the pattern for the next 10 years. So we would certainly encourage everybody out there to be counted. As all of you are only too aware, the housing and construction industries in Rutherford County have been major drivers of our economy for at least the last two decades, and as you're also only too aware, the housing and construction industries have been hard-hit by the recession. The city's Community Development Department has tried to help in the ways we can. We received a stimulus grant of almost a hundred, a little over $168,000 through the Community Development Block Grant Program, allocated it for the housing, for two housing reconstruction projects. These two projects are providing jobs and creating sales tax revenues because of materials purchases. Through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, we have, with the purchase that you approved tonight, we will have purchased nine single-family homes. Seven of these will go to nonprofit organizations, which will lease them to clients at affordable rates. NSP funds are also being used to assist homeowners buying vacant, foreclosed upon houses in the neighborhoods hit hardest by the foreclosure crisis. Three homebuyers have been helped to date, and we have two more that are about to close. We still have funds available to assist at least five more income-eligible homebuyers with no-interest forgivable loans of $14,999. And if you need information on that, you can go to the Community Development pages on the city website. We also budgeted approximately $140,000 this fiscal year to assist income-eligible first-time homebuyers with no-interest deferred loans of up to $10,000 to apply to down payment and closing costs, in part because of the federal $8,000 tax credit for first-time homebuyers. Our Affordable Housing Assistance Program has been so successful this year that our entire allotment was committed by the end of October. And while this transfer will not directly assist our housing and construction industries, there will be an indirect effect as existing inventories are reduced. Getting these industries moving in the right direction will be difficult as long as inventories remain high. So any investment in reducing the available local housing inventory is just a drop in the bucket, but you can't fill the bucket until you add the first drop. So we ask you tonight to authorize reallocating $50,000 from housing rehabilitation to affordable housing, and this will help at least five first-time homebuyers in Murfreesboro. And particularly interesting is the fact that Congress has extended that tax credit through the end of March, so I think we'll find takers.
All right. What would you prefer that we do?
I would ask it that you allow us to reallocate $50,000 from housing rehab to affordable housing assistance.
All right. Council members, have any questions on this recommendation?
May I just move we approve the recommendation?
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Calo. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer to contract for construction of Veterans Parkway Phase 3C and a change order.
Change order?
Number two for Florence Road reconstruction.
It won't be delayed.
Did the price go down?
And with that, we have our city engineer. Mr. Griffith, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor and city council. It's always good to see y'all. The first item I have on the agenda tonight is the contract for construction of Veterans Parkway Phase 3C. I've included a map which shows Phases 3A and 3B, which are currently under construction, and 3C, which we have before you tonight. This will essentially will connect, have a, give us a five-lane connection between, the completion of this would give us a connection between State Route 99 and 96, and it would connect on to the Beasley Road, which we've renamed to Veterans Parkway, on to 840. Eleven bids were received on December 10th for the construction of Phase 3C of this project. The low total bid in the amount of $4,676,284.46 was submitted by CBM Enterprises of Laverne, Tennessee. Our latest engineer's estimate for this phase of the project was $6.3 million, so we're still seeing quite significant savings in our bid cost. CBM Enterprises has completed many similar projects for the city previously, both as a prime and subcontractor. Staff and our consultant, Weiser Company, have reviewed their qualifications and are satisfied they are capable of completing this project within the specified contract time. Weiser's company has also provided the tabulation of the bids, as was a letter of recommendation, which is also attached. We recommend award of the contract to CBM Enterprises, subject to review and approval of the agreement by the city attorney with funding from the TML loan. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the city engineer regarding this bid and the awarding?
My experience with them, Chris has been real good with CBM. They do, they do real well.
Thank you, sir. It's good to hear.
Yeah, they do.
What do we think's the timeline?
Time for the, timeline on the entire project, on all of Phase 3, would be, it'd be complete by fall of 2011.
But this part is just 3B?
This, this part's 3C, actually.
It's 3C only?
Yes. This will, the entire route will now be under construction with, with this, with the awarding of this contract.
So 3A is already underway, and 3B is already underway?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, you have this recommendation of the city engineer to award this contract.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
The second item I have tonight is a change order for Florence Road construction. It's actually, I'd like to make a correction. That should be change order number three, miss number two, which was for a, an ass, a bituminous price index change. Good news is, is construction is nearing completion for the improvements to Florence Road from near Broad Street to Manson Pike. We're really just working out a few final punch list items. During the course of construction, multiple utilities were relocated to provide a corridor for the roadway and the drainage system. One, one such utility, consolidated utility districts water line was more significantly impacted than their engineers originally expected. Consequently, consequently, the cost of the relocation increased significantly. In addition to the water line relocation, we also, it was also necessary to, to construct temporary routes during construction to, to maintain traffic. That's our main north-south connector on that side of town. We didn't really feel like that we could shut that down, and so we basically built a temporary road beside the existing road so we could complete the work. Accordingly, our consultant has prepared a change order to address these increases, and I've attached that for your review. The total, the total contract price for this change order will, is $864,429.80, which will increase the total contract amount to $8,685,067.90. We recommend approval of this change order, along with our consultant, SEC. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council members will note on the final page of that packet regarding the engineer's recommendations on the back is the change order number three. And those are the items that are included, and I'm assuming that all of these items were negotiated, is that correct, with the contractor?
Yes, yes, sir. That's correct.
And there were multiple contractors involved, or just one?
For the most part, there was, there was multiple contractors involved on the project. For the most part, these items that were addressed were just under the, the prime contractor, Genco Construction.
Do they have any other work underway?
They do not. And have not been awarded any of the last couple of jobs that we've, we've bid out also.
Vice Mayor?
Now, this, I guess, would you say that one of the reasons this was missed, this bid was missed was because it was estimated from the CUD engineering part of it, or what was, that's pretty significant. I'd say 10% miss.
It, for, for the most part, yes, sir. It was, there was, just looking through some of their numbers, they, they had 15 to 20 services that would have to be reconnected. I think we wound up reconnecting every service on the project, which was well over 100. And they've, they've also, they also, and this is, this isn't atypical. Anytime you've got a, an old water line that's being impacted, they, there may be sections of it, they're not exactly sure where it's at, and unfortunately, we, we, we found many of those locations and had to, really had to construct pretty much a new line for them all the way up and down Florence Road.
Did they bury the cost of the, from getting an old line to a new line?
They, they do. Yes, they do. Any, any upgrade to their system does include a, does include some cost sharing from, from them. Looking on the order of around $250,000, which would be provided by them, we're still going through the final numbers, and I'll bring that back to council in the final change order for, to close out the project. But I wanted to, to get this before you and just let you know that the, the impact that we had faced.
Mr. Griffith, how do we handle, obviously, and this may be a question for Ms. McGannon, that we operate on a low-bid system, but how do we handle if we hire someone that does not perform to the standard that we like? And then, say, the next contract comes along, and they're the low bidder?
The design professional that the city retains, the outside engineering firm, is the one that would make a determination whether or not a bidder is a responsive and responsible bidder. So we would look to the engineering firm to say, based on the record with the city, that they believed they were not a responsible bidder. Now, as owner, we have, you know, certain ultimate right and control, but we would want to have the outside consultant be the one to, to make that call. We have, on other occasions, discussed that issue with our consultants.
But now, Chris, that project really had a whole lot of issues.
It did. It was, it was a main corridor for, not only, not only Florence Road, but we also intersected Old Nashville Highway there, that, that impacted quite, I think it took us six to nine months to get out of just the Old Nashville Highway intersection. And, and really, if we hadn't had the, I appreciate the, the support of, of the utilities that were involved with it. This was just the water line. Everyone from Murfreesboro Electric, Middle Tennessee Electric, Atmos Gas, Murfreesboro Water and Sewer, everybody was impacted by, by this project, and really added to the, to the overall length of the job.
Yeah, it had a whole lot of unforeseen things that happened out there, so they drilled that project out a long time, so I'm, I'm with you, and I know where you're coming from.
And we foresaw some of that, and that was the reason why we built the project in phases as we did. If you'll, if you'll notice, the intersection up at Old Nashville Highway and, and Florence was, was actually, has been completed for some time now. Matter of fact, probably two-thirds of the project has been completed for some time now. We thought, we knew that, that it was going to take some time to, to construct the entire project, so we didn't want to give the, the neighbors or the residents there the feeling that they were in construction for the entire period. So for that reason, we, what we, we did what we like to call a rolling construction, where basically, we would build sections and then move on to the next section, and eliminating some of the, the hassle and some of the, the dust, and just some of the nuisances that come with, with construction.
Mr. Griffith, help me, walk me through the temporary road part. I would have thought that that would have been an item that would have been in their bid.
It, we did have some additional asphalt in there and some, some stone, but it became, it became apparent, or it became necessary, to build longer sections. Normally, we're able to, to get around with just building, say, a gravel road, and doing just a, I guess, just what I would call a bump out around a construction area. We actually had to build, to keep the project moving and to keep traffic moving, we actually had to build several, a couple of thousand feet of roadway. Now, we did negotiate with the contractor and was able to use a lot of those materials that were used for the construction later for fill in other areas, but anytime you, you use, you turn around and use base stone and asphalt for fill, there's going to be some, some costs there. But again, we, we contemplated and really just didn't want to, to put the public through the, the burden of having to, to find or to give them a detour. It was, I, I think anything that we would have came up with would have took most folks five, six miles out of their way, and we didn't think that was the, the right thing to do for, for several months' time period.
So you're satisfied, on the temporary road part, that the change order request is not a lack of due diligence in the bid process?
No. I, 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 yes, I am satisfied. I don't think that's a, I, I think that it was just a, I think it was just something that became necessary in order to, to keep the project moving.
Mayor, with that, I'll move that we approve the change order. Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Are there other questions on the motion? If not, call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Yelly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the city traffic engineer with regards to a traffic signal timing update and a transportation operation study. Welcome, Mr. Balachandran.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of council. As part of a continuing effort to maximize our traffic operation and efficiency of our traffic signals, in 2008, we did a re-timing project. This will be an extension to that project. In 2008, we looked at five corridors, major corridors in the, in the city, and we looked at individual timing, phasing of those intersections, consisting of about 39 intersections. We were able to make some improvements in the overall delay in each one of those corridors, and, and also looked, looked at the geometrics at each intersection. Just to give you an example on, as far as making some timing modifications on O'Fort Parkway, we were able to look at each intersection, and during the morning peak, we changed the phasing, actually, a lagging phase at the intersection of New Salem and O'Fort Parkway in the morning, so that the double left in the morning, which is not very heavy, from O'Fort Parkway turning on to Highway 99, so that we will, during that time, we allow the inbound traffic from the interstate coming to the CBD area to move at that time. So we made several other improvements like that on our major corridors. This project we have, our contract today, is to extend this project to do three other major corridors. Highway 99 between Bridge Avenue and River Rock Boulevard, Medical Center Parkway between Broad Street and I-24, and the third medic, I'm sorry, highway, Medical Center Parkway from Broad Street to, to I-24, and the third, I'm sorry, is the Middle Tennessee Boulevard, which we just completed between Broad Street and Last Gaster Spike. With that, we, before you, I have a contract that would take about 270 days on a hourly maximum not to exceed $74,790. I recommend approval this, this evening, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
And these are for the signalization, is that right?
That's correct.
Only the signalization?
That's correct.
Will it take into consideration the lane usage or anything like that?
We are going to look, the consultant is going to look at making suggestions if any lane improvements are needed.
It takes 270 days to?
The reason is, we will have to collect some traffic data that may be affected by, you know, seasonal, the MTSU may not be in session, so data collection is, plays a critical part, because we have not done turning movements on some of these intersections for a while. So this would help us identify the movements and then determine the splits for each one of those intersections, so that we can satisfy those movements, and then look at the entire corridor to, to, to get progression or synchronization of those traffic signals.
On, this is a question about existing on Medical Center Parkway. Do we have triggers on the left-turn lanes into the avenue and Robert Rose?
Yes, sir.
At each one of those intersections going out to the interstate?
Yes. All the signals, in fact, all our signals are fully actuated, meaning that we have sensors in a form of loops, all cameras, that actually detect vehicles and sense a pulse to the traffic signal indicating how many cars. And then, based on the number of traffic, timing patterns are set to accommodate those movements.
Back on the Medical Center Parkway corridor, you'll note that we actually use the video detection on that corridor, which is a newer technology. You know, that certainly is going to assist the city when we get ready to repave that road, that we don't have to dig up the sensors when we go to do the repaving project.
So when you initially set Middle Tennessee Boulevard upon completion of the construction project, you, you made a, an educated guess as to how the signal should work?
Yes, Mayor. What we do is, we, we, we have some archived traffic volumes, and we kind of guesstimate or rather estimate, based on the number of years those counts were in our files, and then make a determination. And then visually, I've gone out there several times during the peak hours to make minor modifications here and there, you know, for the individual movements. They are not coordinated right now, so they are working as individual signals, taking care of the movements on a, you know, cycle-by-cycle basis. What we want to do is to coordinate them, so that we can get some progression through those signals.
Do you have an idea of the vehicle counts on Medical Center Parkway and Middle Tennessee Boulevard and Highway 99 now?
Yes, sir. We will be gathering some information, and we do have some traffic volumes that we will be using.
Do we put, post those on our websites, generally, the volumes that?
Yes, sir. We do have a traffic count data that is done by the Department of Transportation, but they are about a year behind, about eight months behind. So right now, we have the 2008 data, and we are working on the 2009. One other thing I do want to add about this is that in the last project, we also looked not only at the peak hour, but also during the non-peak hours. A lot of times, I get lots of phone calls when the cars are not really heavy, but they stop and go, stop and go during the non-peak. And what I mean by non-peak is especially between 9:00 to 11:00, before the lunch crowd picks up, and then from about, I would say, 7:00 to 9:00 in the evenings. You know, it's a stop-and-go on our major corridor. So we looked at that, and we set some timing plans to accommodate that moment, so that people do understand that during the peak hours, they will get some kind of progression, but during the non-peak hours, it's not acceptable to stop and go, stop and go. So this will help to, to, to take care of that.
Other questions?
Mr. Balachandran, is the net effect of, of this study and these changes safety or increased volume?
It is a combination of growth, and, and this project will, will take care of safety in the, in the form of delays, and, and also emission. It also helps reduce emissions and the overall efficiency of the signal systems that have been around for a long time.
So I guess, safety is one goal. I guess, helping the modern public in getting to their destinations quicker and more timely, and also the fuel costs and fuel emissions.
Cut an idle time.
Yes, sir.
That, that would, that would be the benefit. This is what the benefit, the net benefit to the public will be.
Yes, sir.
I know, in talking to Mr. Richardson, he said, "We get the greatest return on our investment for these synchronization-type studies." That we're able to move more traffic down our corridors as a result of a study like this than anything else that we do, in terms of a per-dollar return.
My understanding, I believe, from our meeting the other day with our state legislators, was that we have 125 about signalized intersections inside city limits, is that right?
That's correct.
And this is going to be 30?
About 29 signals, yes.
Of those 125 are going to be studied.
But they're, they're primarily on the corridors?
Yes.
Right.
Other questions for Mr. Balachandran? All right, you have this recommendation of the attached agreement between the city and the engineer. Are you ready for a motion?
May I move, we approve the recommendation?
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Yelly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Balachandran. I, I know you were very forthcoming, and I'm sure, just as Mr. Richardson has stated to this council, that the city and all our visitors have your number, and you get quite a lot of phone calls. I certainly recommend, and people to talk to you if they have issues regarding traffic, and you're very sensitive to that, and I appreciate your efforts and, and what you do for the city. It appears in some ways a pretty thankless job, as many of our jobs in the city do, but you are always very responsive and very knowledgeable, and I appreciate your study and consideration of all the comments that we get from our citizens.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the city manager with regards to a contract for financial advisory services. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of council. Over the past while, our staff has been working on a set of financial policies that we would like to present to you later this spring, that are going to deal with specific guidelines and how the city manages its finances. These will deal in the areas of our operating budget, our capital improvement plan, our cash management, as well as our debt. Staff has really looked at developing a document that incorporates much of the things that staff already has been doing for years, in terms of how the city manages its finances. Additionally, we have incorporated best practices from other communities, as well as recommended practices from the Government Finance Officers Association. We've worked on this project now for a little while, but it's still in draft form. What we would like to do this evening is ask for your concurrence to have a contract with PFM to review and critique this draft document. PFM is the firm that assisted the city in its recent bond issue this past fall. They were outstanding. They were a leading local government financial advisory firm. They estimate the, the cost of this would not exceed $7,500, and we would certainly welcome their expertise as they deal with financial issues in local government all the time. The project would probably take about 60 days. However, as you know, the comptroller's been developing a model debt policy for local governments. All of the points in the comptroller's draft have already been worked into the draft that we have been working on, so we would want to see what the state does relative to that before we would finalize the document and bring it back to you. But at this time, I'd ask for your approval for the contract with PFM.
Any questions regarding this request for a contract for financial advisory services?
May I move for approval?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Yelly?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the assistant fire chief with regards to the purchase of a 75-foot aerial truck. Chief Farley, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you recall, back on December 11, 2009, we actually bid out a new 75-foot aerial truck. Steph is now requesting approval for the second identical truck at the bid price of This was an extremely good price. We have learned that the bid for the same vehicle is more than $100,000 from what our bid was. The bid documents require the prices to be firm for one year, regardless of the quantity that we purchased. According to the second vehicle, acquiring a second vehicle this time means the vehicle will not be subject to EPA standards, which will be changed in January the 1st, 2010. Right now, the, the low bidder has gotten a, some engines that we can, that have actually started building, and they don't have any substantial construction done on them now, so we can actually go ahead and, and be getting the, meet the EPA standards if we do this at this time.
Questions for Assistant Chief Farley?
Assistant Chief, what's the lifespan of a truck like this?
Normally, in the years passed, they've probably been about 30 years. But since the, the new technology, as far as runs and running some extra calls and stuff, we're looking, hopefully, we can get 20 years out of them.
Other questions regarding the purchase of a 75-foot aerial truck? Does this fill in a, a gap in our coverage that we have now, or is it an additional?
This, this is going to be basically an additional one. We, we, it will actually help us with our Class II rating that we have gotten now. We, it will actually help us with our Class II rating that we have gotten now. There is some gap in it right now for its aerials, and it will help us tremendously.
We have two aerial trucks now?
We've actually gotten, actually, the 110-foot ladder is still in service, the 85-foot snorkel is still in service. We've gotten three Telesquirts that are 1990 models. We've gotten two more ladder trucks, which are actually Skybooms, but aerials are when you get over the 61 or 65-foot length.
Okay, that's an aerial.
Yes, sir.
So we have the old 110.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, we've looked at our five-year capital improvement plan, which you'll be getting later this spring. We had one truck programmed for this next bond issue. We had another truck programmed for year two, but in talking with the vendor and realizing the substantial cost savings, the fire department suggested that we go ahead and move up year two's order right now. However, the way we've contacted the vendor, they actually won't build it for a while, and we won't take delivery on it for a while, but we're actually going to be able to lock in the price and save the money. So this is something we're not going to have delivered next week, but we do want to lock in the order now, so we can save the money, knowing that that second truck was going to be coming down the road next year anyway.
So this is for truck one?
This is truck two.
This is truck two.
Actually, truck one, it will be delivered around, probably, August of 2010. Truck two will be delivered anywhere between August, or actually, February of 11, whichever way we want to actually accept delivery. That's up to us.
So do we?
We're locking in the price today for really a truck next year.
And we're saving just over $115,000, basically.
Yes, sir, plus any additional percentage increase in cost later on.
I believe we did that with the last, was it the last two trucks that we bought?
We did that when...
We were able to take advantage of a price.
Yes, sir. When we, when, actually, when Station 10, you know, was being built, we actually piggybacked off of a contract we had at that time for an additional fire engine to help save money.
Right. And obviously, all these things that we do to maintain that, that class rating of ISO II saves our residents on their, their homeowner's insurance that they pay, whether it be yearly or monthly.
Yes, sir. It saves on the residents, also saves on business owners here as well. We are very fortunate in this, in this city to have a Class II rating. I think we are still one of four in the state of Tennessee that's got that rating.
Out of 347 cities, that's pretty good.
Yes, sir. We're very proud of that. And we could not have done that without the mayor and council and the city manager's office allowing us to buy equipment such as this.
And the water and sewer department.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And police communications?
What?
And police communications.
Communications, that's right. We could go down the list.
It's a team effort from everyone.
Move first.
I'll move for approval, if there's no other questions.
Second.
All right, you have a motion, a second. Any questions? Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gelli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye, thank you, Assistant Chief. Chiefs here, deputy chiefs here, we appreciate all of you being here, and we appreciate what you do for our community. I know sometimes it's loud and noisy when you hear, when we hear you coming, but we know you're going to take care of us when we hear you coming.
On the first responders table.
That's right. All right, you have several beer permits before you. Ms. Wright, would you like to talk about those, please?
Yes, sir. We have two pharmacies that had a change of ownership, one at 607 Southeast Broad Street, one at 1331 Memorial Boulevard. We have a change of ownership at a restaurant at 3080 South Church Street. We have a change of ownership and name change at a restaurant at 116 John R. Rice Boulevard. And we also have a new location for Convenience Market at 1725 St. Andrews Drive. These have all met the city requirements for both the building codes inspections and the background checks. I recommend approval.
All right, are there any questions on these beer applications?
Move for approval.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gelli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, you have before you the revised list of statements for payment. If there are any questions, now would be a good time to bring those up. You have that statements to be considered payments list in front of you.
No questions, Mayor? Move we pay the bills?
Second.
I see we're doing our part to keep the economy going.
You betcha.
Have a motion, a second. Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gelli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. I don't have any board or commission appointments at this time, as anyone else from staff? Other business from staff or the council to come before the council at this time? All right, if there is no other business, again, I remind you and encourage you to fill out your census form when you see it the first time, and certainly, it's very important to all of us in the community and in the county to pay attention and fill it out. It's a patriotic duty, and it's one that means so very much to our revenues and our status as a community, and I encourage you to fill that out. Anything else from the council at this time? If not, you're adjourned.